Good evening. Welcome to the New Windsor Planning Commission July 28th meeting. As always, we work from an agenda and based on what information that I get a week or so before the meeting, and I send that out to everybody. We do have a couple of presentations this evening. But before we get to that, a couple of mechanics. First off is the minutes from the June 23rd meeting. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
From my memory, it seems like you pretty much covered everything.
I'll just add in here, because under the new business, it says, "Review with the proposed Springdale Prep School Master Plan." We did not do that, so that's deferred to this meeting, since we have individuals in attendance. So I would just have the note added. Springdale Prep was not in attendance at that meeting. And under the old business, the comprehensive plan review, we went up through Chapter Six. So can I get a motion to accept the minutes with those two changes?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes with those two.
Motion by Drew.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Darn, Rebecca, that was your chance to shine. You could have opposed. Okay. So, next item. We have a long-term resident of New Windsor who has expressed an interest, and we had an opening, and so we had a nice marriage here, and Rebecca has officially been sworn in as our newest member of the planning commission. And I thought we would just take a few moments and go around the room and introduce ourselves. I think you know some of the players here, but not everybody. So maybe Glenn, if you wouldn't mind going first.
Hi. Glenn Monroe. I live on 304 Maple Avenue, right here in town. I've been on the planning commission. I think this is my 22nd or 23rd year, so I'm probably the veteran, but it's been a long time, so.
I thought you were on before me, because what the records are showing is that your first term was July 2nd of 2009. And I think Glenn was on when we joined, Dave, right?
Yeah, it was before that, because Sam Pierce, it was before Neil was even there.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll get that fixed, because according, right now, the records are showing, you only have 16 years. So, yeah, I remember.
Oh, geez. Okay, thanks.
Kevin Shaughnessy, I think this is my first term with the commission, so about four years so far. I live on Gallow Road. I've been here since 2001, so built our house there. Been around.
Good evening. I'm Dave Hoffman. I'm the town council liaison to the planning commission. I did serve on the planning commission for many years way back. Was also the chairman of the planning commission for a while. And until I've been on the town council now, going on 11, 12, maybe 13 years. And I know Rebecca so well.
What we had on here, that you and I started at the same time, and I think we had, Colin, that guy on there, Alex, started with us. It's in 2008, and you were five years, and he said, "You're gonna start the planning, or the town council, so 16." But I think that's when you had your first election.
Yeah.
You filled another term. Okay. Hi, Rebecca.
Hi, Mark.
I'm Mark. I've been here since 2008, and once Dave moved up to bigger and better things, then I was voted in as the chair.
Dave Grayson and I, this is my first term, and I live on the Reserve, right up there on the hill.
Nice to meet you, Dave.
I'm Bruce Schrein. I was appointed in 2011. Living Atley Ridge. An old-timer. I'm an old-timer.
Yes.
Want to say a couple of things about yourself, Rebecca?
My name's Rebecca Price, resident on High Street for, it'll be 41 years in November. We've seen a lot changed, a lot of growth. I've been on different organizations, different committees, the New CAP, on and off the Heritage, New Windsor Heritage Committee. Always been, always been involved in something, not, maybe not officially, but something. I'm a member of St. Paul United Church, and I look forward to being part of this group.
Add that. You, right. So, more than half of this group started here as employees, working somewhere else, and since retired. When you get appointed by the town council, it's a five-year term, and it's often just renewed if interested in both sides. But we, we, quite a few that have retired, and somebody already came to the council, the commission retired, so we'll help you ease into that, if you would.
I'm still full-time employed at Carroll Hospital for 34 years.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Michelle, would you like to?
Well, I introduced myself a little bit ago to Rebecca. I'm Michelle Ostrander. I'm the town attorney, have been since right after the Civil War, I think. And I think I, I think I outlive anybody here, because I go back to the Gallow administration. But I also am mostly retired, except for here, and one or two other clients that I deal with, so.
See, it's part of being on the planning commission.
If you come on, then you get to retire.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
It's not because of the stipend.
I know, see?
We wish it was. We look forward to you being with us for a long period of time. And as you'll see, you're coming into, and we'll talk a little bit later, but you're coming into us at a time that one of the most important functions we have is this comprehensive plan. And we've been aggling over this for the last couple of years, but we're getting to the point of winding down. But you'll certainly be a part of that. Next item, town council updates.
Okay, got a couple of things I'd like to mention. Mayor Kornick and supporting council members are actively engaging with Carroll County Sheriff's Department regarding options for additional police presence to help reduce excessive speed in town. So we're actively looking what we can do with the sheriff's office to get more activity around here with our police. Mayor Kornick signed the Town-County Agreement. This is our annual agreement with Carroll County pertaining to sharing of funds and participation in planning and other government functions, and is part of the NPDES, the National Pollutant Discharge Illumination System Permit, specifically the MS-4 permit, which regulates stormwater discharge from the county's storm system. We get a grant, and that grant from the county to the town is $87,750 this year, and we use that money towards water and sewage projects. So it's a, it's a pretty big deal. It's between the county and all the municipalities in the county, and they, they work on stormwater projects. So it's kind of a cost-sharing and a cost-benefit to all the towns. We passed the resolution for, the town council passed a resolution for the temporary liquor license for music on the main. That's very important to me, since I kind of head up the beer garden at our big major event in October. And the town council and town manager are working on a construction plan and hiring a general contractor for the 211 High Street redevelopment, as you guys all remember. That's the building next door that we are trying to renovate and turn into two-bedroom apartments. Would be lower rent for volunteer fire department members. Go ahead.
I don't see Javier. Not here that he wasn't coming. He usually is here to give us updates. I don't know the guy.
Different motive. Most of the attacks which occurred in Cancun have evidence of.
The ghosts are here.
Our shark is just gathering information about its environment.
At least mute it. That would be good.
Attack. The shark will not be silenced. Just when you thought it was safe to get back in the water.
I don't know. We'll.
Answer your question. I thought Javier was.
Yeah, I did not get any indication, and I checked my email just before I got here. So, hope he's okay. Yeah, okay. Well, with that being said, our next item, Brenda, if you'd like to, let's get you set up. Brenda, is it Dinay?
Dini.
Dini. Okay. From Carroll County Planning is going to chat with us about the water resource element that the county has been working on with Gary, and Wayne, and probably others. So, once again. Oh, is it, okay. It probably is. You got mine.
This might be more interesting.
I don't think so. If we were in the green, I would say that, but you refused to put us there.
Was it?
You're just the messenger. Is that what you're trying to say?
The messenger. Sometimes that's us. I don't think we're being broadcast, anyway. Doesn't look like the cameras are working. They're not moving, I don't think, unless they're all on him. Screen light, okay. Okay. Bring it up on the TV.
And you're up there.
I'll stab you, I promise.
I also think that to the administration.
We go, we go a long way.
Oh, really? You go back to.
To Jay.
We've not had the pleasure of you being here in front of us. You've been avoiding us.
It's not bad. It's just I don't do that kind of work anymore.
Okay.
When I started with you, I was the liaison plan for Windsor.
Really?
Back in the early 90s.
Before Barb Lilly?
Yeah.
Is Barb?
Right. It was the early 90s, yeah. And Jake Owens.
There. And the town manager, and the town clerk, and the guy in charge of the money, and, yeah.
I'm bringing, floor is yours. I love the court. I'm assuming this isn't the talking. You don't need sound.
That would be nice, if something else did the talking for me. I'm not sure how to make this more exciting with sharks, but, even though it's not, it is important information.
That's right you.
So, I'm here tonight to talk about water resources element. And all the municipalities in here have water resources element already placed that was done in 2010. And this is an update to that document. And the purpose of the document is just to make sure that when you're working on your comprehensive plans and making decisions, that the state wants us to be sure that we've considered any opportunity and limitations that there are with the water, wastewater, stormwater, or any other water resources for the county. And then we need to address the relationship between those resources and what your planning group is. Like I said, the water resource element was first adopted in 2010, and it was one document adopted by the county and all the municipalities. And so when you adopt the plan, you adopt the entire thing, but exclusive of the individual sections for the other towns.
Does it roll into a state plan?
No, it's strictly.
So it's the county?
County and municipality. So when, when the town adopted, it's your plan, at least an element of your plan. So when we did this the first time, we did the same thing. We have the, you're familiar with the Water Resource Board Nation Council? That's a group of staff, mostly the town managers, some Department of Public Works folks from the towns, and then our department at the county, which is planning and land management, and health department. And we meet monthly and talk about water resource issues, and like Mr. Schultz indicated. See, it's the 32 years.
Gets to be.
Yeah. Yeah, so we meet, oh yeah, definitely. So we meet monthly, and one of the big things that pulls the group together is the fact that you are, the all municipalities and the county are part of the same stormwater permit. So that's one of the things that is discussed, and of course, we cost-share on the meeting the requirements of that permit. So it's awesome, the group that we use to work on this plan together, both back in 2010 and at this update. So normally, the state requires an update to be done to accomplish the plans every 10 years. A lot of times it's delayed based on census information. In this case, the state came out with new guidance in 2022. So after that is when we were able to begin the process of updating, and adding some things that weren't in there before, such as addressing climate change, and one thing that we added that wasn't in there is emergency candidates. It's related with P-class issues that a lot of jurisdictions are having to treat their water because of these new standards. The P-class is that forever chemical, well, plastics that don't go away. So that, that's addressed. When you, when we do these plans, the numbers aren't. The guidance requires us to use MDE's methodology, which is in the guidance document when we did it. We.
I don't know if the department is.
Correct. Yes, sorry. We picked a point in time, because with 18 systems being addressed by this plan, we'd never be done, and we kept updating and updating every single time. So, you know, we're looking at this, is it, not only is it a point in time, but it's like a quarter of 92 is what you really want to look at. So this, all of the projections were based on what was in your water sewer service areas in the 2023 Water and Sewer Master Plan, and the zoning that was in place in 2022, because that's what the demand, like the future growth estimates are based on, is the 2022 zone. And then it's all the service areas, including the long-range service area that's in your water sewer plan. Even though that's not one that MDE requires, it's one that the county municipalities include, so that we can sort of plan a little farther out than just the 10-year horizon. Three main things that are required to be, three main sections of the plan, and what I said, climate change is a new add, and that's sort of integrated throughout the water and the other sections that are here, because it hits everything. And some of the things that are done for one thing, to address climate change as well. So we've got drinking water supply, we've got wastewater, and we've got stormwater are the three main sections of the plan, the background, and the three main issues that are addressed. So, as you were indicating, you look at the numbers that demand and the available capacity are things that we estimate that we put together using the Round Department of Environment's methodology, because they want to make sure that you have, you being all of you's updated. Make sure you have the capacity available for the growth that you are planning on in the future. If not, then you either have to scale back what you're planning, or plan for improvements to accommodate it. And a lot of that's going to depend on, like, which direction you go. Depends on money and other issues that might be influencing whether you can increase your capacity. So freedom is green up here because they're certified reservoirs. See, all the ones that are in yellow are basically in yellow because they, it's a little bit easier for them to get additional water supply. Reason why Windsor is red is because water and wastewater are very much tied together. You have a plant that pumps 115,000 gallons per day, or treats 115,000 gallons per day, and you can't pump 200,000 gallons of water, because your plant can't treat that. So in New Windsor's case, what's holding back the town from expanding your water supply is the need for expanding it to 15,000 gallons. And the only reason it's down in red is because that's a significant amount of money that, and I know it's a big issue for the town, in terms of making sure that we're not losing existing funding, while at the same time looking to expand and also pursue events, enhancing the removal treatment for the plant. So it also comes out much, much worse than you might think for all of these systems, because when you, I assume you're familiar with the Water and Sewer Master Plan, because the New Windsor had it amended recently. So basically, the Water and Sewer Master Plan looks at the demand and the plant capacity, and compares it to see if you have available capacity. That's basically how that works. So the reason this is so much worse is because MDE, the method that they have us use, adds 10% for drought demand, and also assumes that your, like, whatever your most limiting factor is. So if, say, I know at least one of the towns, the limiting factor is if you take the highest producing well out of service, then what do you have available? So it becomes very, very conservative, and then, because MDE is trying to get everybody to have this redundant capacity, and diverse sources, not saying that's a bad thing, but it certainly makes the numbers look much worse than we would expect them to be. So what do we do about this? For all of the, all of the municipalities in the county, looking very far down in the future, one of the things that we're trying to do to expand is show Round Department of Environment that, you know, we do have water available, like, for example, groundwater. A study was done by a consultant to just estimate groundwater that's available in the county, and it was, if you looked at that, you would say, we definitely have enough water. MDE can't say we don't have the water. It's really just a matter of getting it, getting MDE to prove our access to it. But looking down the road, you know, climate change, regulation changes at the state and federal level, we're looking at things that we can include, and these are all things that have been in the plans in 2010. But regional-wise, we have reservoirs in there, we've got surface water intakes, a couple of the municipalities have quarries as an option for getting water in the future, of course, groundwater wells, possibly interconnection with other systems, and indirect potable reuse, which if you're familiar with Westminster system, what they're doing, they are constructing a potable reuse system from their wastewater, constructing a plant to treat that, it's going to go into their reservoir, and then when the water in the reservoir gets treated, the water treatment plant, it'll get treated again.
Is that the monster plant on 31? Is that what that's done?
The one that, that's there, it's not built yet, so the one that's there is our existing plant. But, so, these are just showing again that we have options for getting water in the future for the plant growth that we want to pursue.
Is there something that shows, because obviously, to make that determination, you're looking, I guess, like a delivery reservoir, you're looking at the whole county, but is there something that shows where those pockets of water are that you identify? There's this capacity?
So, it's called a water balance study, when you look at the entire county, and basically, you know, looking at the water recharge rates and all this technical stuff, you know, that they do to figure out how much groundwater there is. I don't know that they have an estimate by a photographer, but they look at surface water and groundwater, and the water's there, it's just, the problem is getting it.
I just got a message from Gary that they're having trouble hearing you, so the request is that I get you that microphone.
Oh. I'm getting it, Michelle.
It's not that far.
Well, she can do it.
She's faster than either of us. 32 years notwithstanding. So you, it's got to go on, there's a button. And I think there's like a light once it's on, like that green light right there. I'm sorry to have interrupted you, but he sent me that. Brenda, it's hard to hear. Move the mic.
So, the plan also, we have county-wide strategies in the plan, and all of, we all work together to identify, like, action items or recommendations that everybody could do, and that's in the county-wide section. And then I work with each municipality to identify specifically for that municipality action items to meet your needs in the future. So these, all of the action items come from the town, and working with the town. So strategies are, you know, this is kind of what we're working toward, the action items are the specific recommendations for things to do. So they're, they're pretty much all, like, protect existing supply, develop new as needed, conserve water, and develop emergency supply to the plant. Just some key items would be to, like I mentioned, diversify water supply for increased redundancy and mitigate climate change, because that's what MDE is looking for us to do, but it's also just a good idea. For example, freedom, if, if we get water just from the reservoir, and something happens to the plant that's drawing water from the reservoir, there's no water. So diversifying helps to ensure that if something happened to one supply, you're still getting water from somewhere else for those people who are expecting it. Investigating water reuse options, there's multiple different types of water reuse, so looking into that. Drought management plans, and a lot of the municipalities already have them, some don't, some do. And identifying emergency supplies and measures, and then shared service agreements. So these are ways that we can help each other, and also measures for each individual municipality to look at. So specifically for New Windsor, for the water supply, town's looking at providing redundant capacity, and bringing sources closer to towns, and modifying the towns to water appropriation permits, bringing Atley Ridge well online, and exploring wells at the New Windsor Middle School property. Long-term, when a system reaches 80% of its capacity, MDE requires a water supply capacity management plan to be done, which shows, you know, how you plan to address your growth and needs with that last 20% being left. And then expanding the wastewater treatment plant while maintaining your funding, and then the regional water supply options can be looked at long-term as well. We've got wastewater, similar situation, of course, the water supply is red because the plant needs to be expanded, so that's. So that's why that's in red here. Similar strategies, we want to sustain what we have and develop new as needed. So overall, everybody can benefit from fixing their infiltration issues and reducing the INI. So for example, if you don't know what that is, like for one way that sometimes it might be a state crack in the pipe and water's coming into the pipe. So it's increasing your flows, which means it's taking capacity at the plant. So if you can decrease water that's coming in from other places besides where it's supposed to be coming from, you actually gain treatment capacity at your plant. So that can help everybody, like all nine systems need to do that. And it's also a little bit less expensive than expanding or building a plant. And then of course, water reuse is an option and for New Windsor, expanding your current wastewater treatment plant. So these are things that were key overall options to look at. County-wide, some of the key things were to coordinate on INI reductions and share equipment with contractors. A lot of the municipalities have INI programs already in place. Some of them have different equipment than others. And we've talked about the idea of maybe sharing that among the municipalities to help each other save money and to get more of the INI reductions done. The two plants that have not been upgraded to enhance nutrient removal technology are New Windsor and Union Bridge. So that's a county-wide action item. Can explore zero discharge and water reuse opportunities if it gets to that point. And then of course, funding the improvements that are needed through having to put the improvements in the water and sewer plant and then fund them, which is the next challenge, right? Do anything you can. For New Windsor specifically, we're upgrading to E and R and then the INI improvements. Long-term, up to the wastewater capacity management plan at 80%, expanding the wastewater treatment plant. You can look at requiring water reuse for high-water industrial users. You can evaluate the idea of possibly connecting to Westminster's system if both municipalities are ready to look at that. Or you can investigate spray irrigation for graywater reuse. Not all of these action items are just, none of it's a commitment. It's all like, you're working on your comprehensive plan, so I'm sure you know, it's all recommendations, it's not a commitment to do it, but it's things, all the recommendations are things that could be done to help you get where you want to go. But it's not required. When it's going to be required is if you do submit a capacity management plan and, you know, you have development that needs to be served and MDE will require you to do something in order to make sure that happens. It's going to come through those types of things, not through the plant. Then there's stormwater. Stormwater was super easy because we do have the permit. We have an annual report that's done every year to show MDE and EPA the progress that we're making and the requirements of the permit. So anything in terms of existing impermeable area is already being addressed through the permit in terms of water quality and mitigating runoff. And new development is addressed through the existing stormwater regulations that are in place. So stormwater isn't really anticipated to be a factor and limiting factor in future The key action items are pretty much the same for everybody. We all, the state is working on revised stormwater regulations, which we are expecting the draft to be out very soon when they make them final. All the jurisdictions are going to have to update their stormwater regulations to comply with the new state plan. We'll all have to look at doing flood management plans by watershed that will probably wind up being in our stormwater permit eventually, so we'll have to do that. Continued support for agricultural land preservation programs, because that's less impermeable area if, you know, there's less development. Working on a higher class level for the FEMA's community rating system. If you're not familiar with that, the community rating system is kind of, there's different levels of it. And the floodplain manager within the county, he's been working towards getting higher and higher classes. So the higher class you get through the community rating system, the more discount there is on flood charts for people who are required to have it. And then identifying things that can work for stormwater and other things. So everything you see there are the same things we're going to do for climate change. And then of course, funding opportunities. And none of the individual systems have action items just for stormwater because we all have the same permit and we all have the same action items. So for climate change, of course, we're expecting warmer temperatures as we're all experiencing, increased extreme precipitation events, increased flooding, and increased water quality issues, but at the same time, increased drought potential. So again, same action items as for stormwater. And so these, even though we've discussed climate change, those action items are integrated throughout each other's sections. And there's emerging contaminants. I already mentioned PFOS, which is the forever chemical. We have some other things that we need to be looking at in the future. Pharmaceuticals and personal care products have been an issue that's been talked about for a while now, road salt. And lithium is another thing that we're expecting EPA to set limits on in the near future. So some of the action items associated with emerging contaminants are to continue testing and monitoring so we know where we, like what's our status when it looks like something is coming down the pipe. PFOS mitigation plans, several municipalities are, like Hampstead is ready to move forward with constructing a central, water system centralization project so they can treat PFOS. Some of the other municipalities have wells offline because of PFOS found in them until they can figure out how to treat it. So having a plan for addressing that also brings funding opportunities. Everybody has salt management plans, that's an action item here, but you all have them by now because that was a requirement on the stormwater permit. Lead and copper, water line inventory and replacement. Everybody, all the municipalities are required to submit to MDE an inventory of where your lead and copper pipes were. That was back in October. The next thing is they're going to require you to replace them. So again, money and time. Lithium monitoring is because we do anticipate the drinking water standards to be put in place. And because of all these things, we need also allocating funding for it. So that's kind of a...
No, no, no. So I'm looking here.
So that's basically what's included in the plan and some of the key highlights for it. Right now, all the municipal planning commissions are doing just this. Three or four of them have, what we're asking for ultimately is for each planning commission to give us approval to send this draft to the state for the state-required 60-day review period. During that time, the state agencies review the draft and provide comments back to us. We hold a public information meeting during that time. And then a public hearing is held afterwards. So we anticipate there will be changes after the 60-day review based on comments from the state. And also, there could be changes based on comments we get from the public hearing. So this is just a draft and it's to get feedback on now from the state before we go any farther. So what we're asking for all the planning commissions to do is just to give us approval to send it out for that 60-day review. Because after the 60-day review, we'll hold one joint public hearing of all the planning commissions. We did this in 2010, so I know it's possible. And now we actually have hybrid as an option, so that will make it easier for people to be able to join since all you need to do is listen to comment. It's not an interactive thing. And then we would address that feedback, bring, you know, the revised draft back for all the planning commissions to then approve a final draft to recommend to your elected officials. Who have to go through a lot of the similar process. I mean, they don't have to do the 60-day review, but they will also have to hold a public hearing. And then they can change, make changes, they can prove it or adopt it as is, they could just flat out deny it, or they can remand it back to you and maybe have to go through this process again.
You talk about a group that means monthly, they're working with us. Is that members of municipalities are part of that, or are these Carroll County?
No, it's staff in all the municipalities.
Okay.
And then staff in my department and the health department.
Okay. Because I got an email from Gary doing a very higher-level summary of what Brenda is sharing with us. And his comments are just a complete couple lines. It says, "The action items in here," and I think you've also said this, Brenda included in the WER, "do not permit the county or municipalities to take the action." And he is recommending that we give approval to send this one for the 60-day review by the state. Because they, my understanding, both Wayne and Gary have been involved with this. So they either have seen this or have heard this presentation.
Yes, I worked with both of them to get the numbers and the action items.
So Gary and Wayne came to us back in, say maybe November, and talked about some of the elements in here, about the water and about the waste treatment. Gary's the town manager, Wayne is the facility director, or works director for the town.
I had a couple, I had two questions. One, the presentation makes it sound like, you know, New Windsor's big action items are we really need to find additional sources of water, redundant sources of water, and we need to expand our wastewater treatment facility. And I agree with both of those. However, there's still that underlying MDE permit. So even if we found lots of water, and even if we built the biggest plant possible, we still have to be permitted through MDE for future growth. We just can't build and start pumping water and treating water. MDE has a, and MDE was in here, but it seemed like it was kind of like a low-level player. But it's really not. They really have the say, right, of how much we can grow regardless of what we can build or how much water we find.
Right. And that's why I said, when I mentioned that we have plenty of groundwater and surface water, it's just getting it and getting MDE to approve our access to it. So one of the things under New Windsor's specific action items was to increase appropriations from the state. You know, you'd have to work with MDE to get them.
Right. And that's a precarious...
It's not a simple thing.
Right, right. You just can't say, "We're going here when you're here." You have to play that out.
Does it please work?
All right. And secondly...
But that's why we have to show, like, we show what the plant growth is and that we have water or can give water and wastewater to serve that.
And my second question was about the PFOS. It sounded like several of the municipalities are already working towards something, but we have talked about PFOS here several times. And I thought it was my understanding that we still don't have nailed-down standards to meet. So we're kind of like shooting in the dark when we're trying to figure out what to build to treat PFOS when we don't really know what the standards are going to be put on us for them. Is something that's changed maybe, or?
No. So EPA, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, set the standard for drinking water for PFOS in April of last year. So we know what the standard is. It could be, so, and then the wells have been, you know, everybody's been testing wells to see what those PFOS levels are. Not everybody has PFOS issues. I'm sure four municipalities do, but that doesn't mean that the other four do.
Has there been technologies built that can treat the levels that they've put on?
Yes. Hampstead, Hampstead is the first one going through this process. They were able to get grant money to pay for a significant portion of it, but it's $30 million. And they have a couple wells offline because of the PFOS contamination. And they have multiple pump stations. So what they're doing is they're creating one centralized treatment system, so bringing all the water there and then treating it for PFOS at that one point instead of having multiple points where they have to treat it. So, and a common, one of the common treatment measures is granulated activated, granular activated carbon, which if anybody has a filter, pitcher, the filter in that is, that's granulated...
Granular activated carb...
Gas. And reverse osmosis is another method that's used. I think Hampstead's going with the granular activated carbon for theirs.
Any questions? I know some lithium, that sounds, that's a new, is that from batteries or not a natural occurring vegetation?
Apparently, there is naturally occurring lithium. I'm sure there are places where lithium is coming from man-made sources. But apparently, it's also a natural thing. I'm not going to explain all that, this is just the information from the community.
I think we want that.
So is your looking for for us to be able to say, you do the okay, you order, true?
You could just say the, you know, county or planning land, whatever. But yeah, it will be me. I'm currently working through the county planning commission as well, and they will probably take a bit longer to get through because they are also working on the county master plan at this time. So what I'm doing is I'm also, any changes that come about from working with municipalities in the county, I will document and send out to municipal planning commissions. So they're going to see what changes are made before they're not received in the review. Like I said, it's, there are going to be changes anyway after the review.
After the 60-day review, then there will be the final plan that will come to us. And then we have, we give our recommendation to the local legislator by the town council board.
Yes, but in between, after the 60-day review, there's the public hearing.
Okay.
So there could be changes from comments from there, and there could be changes...
Local public hearing or...
Yeah. So there could be nobody, or there could be 100 people, it's never enough. But there, we'll also have comments from the state agencies, so there could be changes from that as well. We'll figure out after the public hearing what changes we want to make. And once that's decided, then you can have a plan to recommend to them.
So right now, it's just us making a motion to accept the, of the already water resource supplement as presented to us now and have it forward on for 60-day, for the 60-day review period.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Dave Grayson. All those favor, second by, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that's why I need to, I need to offer something in writing to you to say.
Yeah, I think when you approve your minutes next, for this meeting next month, just send me a copy of the minutes. But then, you know, I can get that from Gary.
Got it. Thank you. You might want to stay where you were. So I do see somewhere you did stop in to pick up the full size set of the nine attachments. It looks like these were the same as what we got.
There was a, there was a stack, how many were there? Six?
Six, because I have one.
Oh, okay, there was a stack here that.
I passed them out.
Just that they should get passed around.
That's what I was mentioning.
I stopped in this morning and.
There's two right there. And that one should be yours, Rebecca.
Drew, you already got one.
Yeah, no, I have, stopped in this morning and.
I need to take one home with me, look at it.
You may see a couple of notes on there that I'll have.
You're always welcome.
Yes.
Okay, great.
See it.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you. Why don't we do the same thing we did with Brenda's, is grab that microphone. It doesn't amplify, but it's the recording for people at home, they can hear better.
I mean, you know.
It comes off.
If I have a move over here, we can.
Before Gary sends me another text that says we can't hear, we'll be aware of that need. And there's a little button on it that comes up green. All right, whatever works for you will work for me.
So, I'm assuming you're Kyle?
No.
You're Kyle.
I'm Sam G, sir.
You're Kyle.
I'm Sam G.
Oh, nice to meet you. Tell us a little bit about who you are and why you're here.
So I'm Sam G Patel, I'm with Dudeth Hayne Architects. And this is.
My name's Kyle Donaldson, I'm with the H G, through the Cibbles for Springdale Preparatory School, which is a participation you'll be seeing today.
Right, and so just to give the drawings a little bit more context, we thought we would maybe share a couple of visuals that we had. I believe we've shared some of this, maybe a year or more ago?
No. Spring of twenty-four? Not here.
Not on the planning commission, maybe it was another meeting.
There were some planning commission members, we've got a couple of meetings.
There was a meeting with the town, but no, you've not been in front of the planning.
This group per se.
Okay, so some of these visuals have been circulated in part of previous presentations with various members of the Springdale Prep School and Town. You know, this is sort of a, call it a ten year plan or vision, if you will. It's sort of what we were hired to help provide some guidance for Springdale Prep. And the visual here, it's more of an aerial view of what we call the hilltop campus. It's really meant to be a residential reporting, you know, high school with capacity of about four hundred all set. And the design of it is really based on, the planning of it is really based on acknowledging the current topography and the existing historical buildings on campus specifically. Could you go to the next?
Before you do that, just to get orient for everybody where we are. Right in the very center, you see Old Main, oh, hit the flag. Yeah, Old Main. And then if you move out to the quad area, the green area, that's kind of parking right now. The top, the mountains are back here behind us. So we're looking west, and you want to, let's see, where's Ziegler?
Ziegler's.
Ziegler. And then, what's the one next to Old Main? I forget.
Windsor Hall.
Windsor Hall, yeah.
Which is recently immigrated. And.
Oh, there's the forming arts center, and then there's the, okay. Gotcha, okay. In case anybody wanted to get the bearings of what we're looking at. Okay, thank you.
I think the next image is just zoom in. A big version of the same aerial view.
I hate them.
Kind of zooming in on Old Main. Old Main is the oldest structure, or oldest building in Carroll County. And the master plan is really trying to honor that history. And the planning of it centered around Old Main, in fact. If you go to the next slide, it shows the overall view. Where the Old Main is shown, intersection of vertical dash line from the east west axis. You know, common dual door from the bottom of the hill. And of course, we want to maintain that dual corridor across the mountains. The orange arrows show the topography that we're trying to organize pathways along sidewalks. So that's generally the idea, is that Old Main has become the center of the campus.
There is an orange arrow, there is a walkway tie.
Well, not all of them, but I think it's really to denote the topography. There's a tie ground at the top of the, with the green spaces at the top of the arrow, and then it sort of steps down. And so that's really the organizing elements behind. The scale of the buildings, of the new building, it tends to be in keeping with the same scale of existing structures. Except for along the very east, excuse me, on page right, is a sort of a larger structure, which is shown as a gymnasium, physical education center with an indoor pool ideally, that could be used, not just by students, but also could be open to the community. And then at the very bottom of the page is an auditorium space. That would also serve school, but then it also could be open to the community for events, places. So that's the, again, this is a long term view, but sort of a ten year plan. You know, at least it gives the drawings that we submitted a little bit of context. Ideas behind the master plan, the top campus. Yeah, I think that's it, and then you can go over to start to get into the.
So is the idea that this becomes the entire campus?
For the upper school.
Okay, so would you say upper school?
Nine through twelve grade.
Okay, nine through twelve.
Nine through twelve.
That's the purpose of this, okay. So then that means the one through eight is going to be the.
Oh, yeah, exactly, lower school, we're going to be getting current schools.
And if you're looking at a nine, twelve, and I heard earlier, looking at a four hundred.
Roughly four hundred. At this point in time, it's probably a good change.
Three dorms, that you have one there puts you at about three fifty for two dorm buildings.
That's right.
So it's primarily a residential school.
Correct. Now, there are students currently that also come from surrounding area, but it's not just strictly.
But that's roughly about ten percent in this master plan. You're moving toward about ninety percent are, are warding.
So these are, that means the whole size plans that were submitted, some have half size, the eleven by seventeen's as well. The first couple sheets were just breaking out the phases of what the master plan would look like. So breaking down the ten year plan into much smaller chunks, more feasible chunks that will. Yeah, it is a great partnership with the Windsor and the, as well. So it's not the entire, we understand that the entire master plan does not work currently with the New Windsor master plan. And they're more than dry, but yeah, that's all. Phase one would be, and just phase one and phase two are mostly additions to existing buildings. Phase one is the Blue Ridge building, and that's basically going to be classrooms. There are going to be two restrooms in there. I know we just had a large meeting on wastewater, water capacity and demand for the town. And that is going to be usually done on this, which is why it's also broken out. Phase one is the Blue Ridge addition, and phase two A, we have it broken out into two A and two B. Two A would be the addition to Ziegler Hall, which is mainly dining facilities currently for the school, as well as a few admin offices. And then adding a residence hall that's roughly about forty thousand square feet on the east of the page. Along with, during phase two, would be the installation of the connector or the utility loop that's going through and bisecting this current property. What this does is, it will be the entire utility corridor for the school as well as connecting to two water mains, one on College Ave, as well as Springdale Road. What this helps is, one, it helps the water capacity in that area as well as help out a little part of the low pressure zone in that area as well. Creating redundancy in this current system that's already in place. Phase two B is the quad area. That's simply just the courtyard, just having a nice green space where the school would be, where the current graph, paved area is for the marketing. And this would be the large courtyard, oval area for the school as well, for graduations. Right. Really, I think, I don't know if you want to sit down there, see if you, or go on the, go to the next picture. Let's break out the phase in real quick. Phase three will be the S T M building, so it's going to be the science and knowledge building this year. Phase four is another residential hall. Phase five is the light building, which this will have the swimming pool, the courtyards, and gymnasium as well in there. And phase six is a faculty housing and the performing arts center. And that's the lower triangular piece, or triangular peninsula of the property. So that's the general phasing of the entire upper campus. I think what we are looking at are potentially looking for approval for phase one and phase two. Since the estimated capacity versus demands is rather low, and just mainly additions to already existing buildings and the garden, uh, school and library. And they don't sit in the courtyard, in as well as the building corridor. So bringing up further into the series, it's going to have very drawn more concept levels to better help to build the proposed features. How we expect to face the entry into the dissertation. Just see in the following. As well as the final, is the final build out, which is the utility master plan on the overall site. Which kind of shows all the utility that's going through the site. Stormwater onsite, if any questions about that, is central gathering. I'm seeing any current, now we have, or if we need to change. First off.
Don't see anybody storming or coming by.
Yeah, we're rough.
How many stories do they have now?
A hundred, sixty-two.
Better nine to twelve, phase nine to twelve?
I'm not sure if the, 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 the overall is a hundred sixty-two. And they have, I think ninety-two of those are residential, currently.
And that was, because again, providing all of the, so there were renovations done over there.
True, for Windsor Hall.
For Windsor Hall.
That's correct.
For the ninety-two residents that are there now. There were renovations up there, Bill.
That's part of the.
What is the capacity for that, for Windsor Hall?
For Windsor Hall, I believe it's. I think sixty-eight, that's. I think back to housing, always has a decker, currently.
Do you have any sense of how many are in there?
I don't. But we can get that.
How many stories will the residents be that you're building?
Well, because it's sitting on a sloping grade, we're looking at sort of two levels on the short end, maybe half a level below, so.
Okay, so, okay, that's all I was asking, so basement to three, yeah, okay.
For Todd, my idea, planning for phase one.
Phase one, if we get approval, I could see that going as early as going through a title of phase or depending with the county, early as twenty, late twenty twenty-six, early twenty twenty-seven.
We'll probably be able to move over the design next year.
Twenty-six and then permitting if that happens. Instead of twenty-seven. That would be two ridge renovation of existing building that's there and then additions. Just shown here on the screen.
So what you're looking to do is start building. Now renovating and building additional classroom space.
Correct.
To ultimately be able to get, you know, facility to be able to handle with capacity of four hundred students. Twelve, and how many are we looking at for the lower?
Well, in, in our master plan, initially, I think the target was around three hundred.
For the lower school?
For the lower school. It becomes middle school.
And do you have any sense of how much of that's going, because that's got, these people works have to be built down there?
Yeah, that, that would be a much later. Phase. We have, I think we estimated. Yeah, I think our focus has been the Hilltop Campus, not as. Because that would come after the high school.
You know, we didn't plan it this way, but I think the timing couldn't have been better for you to hear somebody separate for us. The issue with water.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, I've been part of this with other type of organizations. I, I understand the concept, you have to start building, you have to start somewhere and you start building the capacity to get where you want to go. But there is not any kind of guarantee. And we're already behind, and we're searching for answers for our current, for our current town. And it's not only the capacity for our current town, but this is now something that is beyond the initial discussions that were had years ago with Johnny. The, the first headmaster. It, it not saying anything other than that has been factored in. And there needs to be some kind of a plan worked out on what we're going to do about water and the waste treatment. And.
I noticed that in Brenner's presentation with short term, Action Adams was looking at new wells on the middle school property. Our understanding is that Springdale has signed off on, on well drilling to the county.
That's natural. That, that's, I'm not sure where you're getting that from, but.
Yeah, we worked very hard to make that happen and we never got there.
Yeah.
We could not get it signed off. Dr. Borman mentioned that, this, Borman to us that, back in November, December. I think their attorney signed off on the, on the form to the county.
It would be really helpful if, yeah, I mean, Dr. Borman could come talk with us.
Yeah.
And help answer some of these questions because that is, that's not a new issue. I know that was discussed at the meeting I was at early twenty-four, with the school when you were doing the. The presentation to the faculty. But, you know, my understanding, there has not been any movement and I know that the town manager and our public works director also, you know, said there hasn't been movement.
I think the county being, uh, this was, or even they were wondering the same from, for the laws of the county's court, didn't that happen on the door?
I, I, I think that there, before we can do something with this, I think there needs to be some meeting. With the county, with the town management here, the town manager specifically, whoever you bring. And school. Because this looks great. You know, being a resident here, I would love to know that something like that is, is going to be around.
Right.
But that changes the complexion of the whole town and it's a private school. And, you know, we're, we're here representing the citizens of this town. And, you know, we, we have a problem as it is and limitations with where we are. So all of a sudden be bringing in, you know, uh, all these additional. We, we don't have a plan to be able to bring that in. And you're going to have to be part of the solution.
Yeah, I think, I think Springdale is, uh, we're, we're to be a part of that solution.
With all due respect, I don't believe that has been acknowledged. And I think that needs, that that is a hurdle we have to get over. So it has to be something, it's a jointly moving forward with a clear understanding, not thinking, and frankly, I don't think it bodes well not having school representative here tonight, frankly. What are you doing in this situation? But, um. I mean, that's just my view, I don't know what others think on this, but. This is obviously huge for, for the town, for the county. You know, and frankly, probably for the state, uh, to have something like this going on. And we have, it's not just, it's not a political, it's, it's.
Policy.
And we don't have a large small town, we have limited resources, including water. And like we've done with the lot, they're going to have a little creek running through that. I'm sure there are solutions that's way beyond my pay grade. Ashell, and at least be moving towards.
Some kind of agreement in place for when they.
Very random.
But a long-term resident. But I'm just curious as to what the responsibility is to a, the owner of the property, the builder. Say, say it was a big mall being built where that, say it wasn't a school, but say it was, say, a big mall with, you know. Tremendous use of, of our resources. Whose responsibility would it be to make sure that what they're putting there doesn't take away from the resources of the, the current citizens of the town? I mean, is it the responsibility of that per, of that organization to have the water plan or plans? Before all this, this big money was spent on this plan? I mean, this is a lot of money just before anything's happened. And to not have it in place, the impact on our, you know, our infrastructure. I mean, that seems to be a very big part of the responsibility of the.
We're talking water, waste treatment. But we had studied by State Roads. Department of, of around the seven eleven having that roundabout. Uh, when we had, or something being put in. And that, you know, when you talk about this kind of a plan, having, you know, four hundred, uh, four hundred, two hundred parking spots in the traffic there, I mean, there, there's all kinds of issues with the State Roads. But, but M D E certainly will have an, an opinion on this because it is a significant addition. Drain on the resources that we have. So.
If you comment on that, I think it's important to have the plan ahead of time so you have a vision of kind of what, what everyone's talking about. You actually have it on paper. So that way, it, so now we can have these conversations. I did, we had the first presentation, it was to the school. Some people in the, in the room were in attendance over there. And we were, we knew that we had to come to the planning commission to present to everyone. So this is our way, kind of get started, get that ball rolling a little bit, seeing where we need. To either, well, actually either the plan or there's offline talks with the school and the town. We always knew that this is going to be a partnership and incorporated strategic response to growing within the Windsor. I don't think that's ever been a question of capacity versus demand. We always knew that there had to be an increase in water capacity as well as wastewater treatment. Because you increase one, you have to increase the other. So I, I think that that's the, these are the first steps in getting going. And we know that everything that before, you even get Carol County staffs for approval, has to come through the planning commission to meet the town of New Windsor's approval. And that's kind of where our first step's on.
Thank you.
When, Mark, when, um, it was Jonathan, wasn't it, who came and presented this? Yeah, Grant, Jonathan Graham, what's that, ten, twelve years ago?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
And then that was when they were in the process of purchasing, purchasing the school, but they purchased that from the county, correct? Or leasing it from the county?
Well, no, they originally.
Oh, that's new, nevermind, that's new one, but, um.
That's what they got and then, uh, I don't even know if Johnny was here when they got the.
I think he was gone by the time. Either of you gentlemen know if that acquisition has been finalized?
To my knowledge, oh, you're talking.
The, the, the middle school, which it's always going to be the middle school.
I one hundred percent agree with you. At to our, to our knowledge.
You did go to school there.
I did. And it's very cool going back and seeing as we'll get to that, as opposed to something else. Boy, at, to our knowledge right now, the ownership has not changed on that lower campus. So that's why we kind of wondered about the, if there's a disconnect between all three parties, whether it's the county, the town, or Springdale about digging the well.
There is a disconnect.
But we did, we did have a meeting here between the county, the school, and the town.
Yeah, just about the well.
Not just.
About a lot of things.
Yeah, yes, a lot of things. And we did have a big meeting and.
I remember him throwing out numbers like three hundred students was their goal at one time and there was. There was definitely discussions about all that.
Right, but initially it was just the voting, what.
What's there, right.
Service, whatever that campus was called there.
Well, the Brethren Center property, that's how people refer to it, like the old middle school. And it's going to be a while before, before you're, before you're not the Brethren Center.
But also adding into that, from my knowledge, the Brethren Center was an educational, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah. In, 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 in part.
It was a college, actually. It started as a.
It's been a lot of things up there, but what it has been is only interesting, we need to know what.
I want to say at least three times talking about vision, talking about moving. And I've been, came here as well as to the town council and had the outside, arm in arm. That hasn't been happening. And there is a, there is a disconnect. No, the, the issue of the well over there. Ownership of the property, again, that's an indication of going to be here and return. Because that was going to be one of my questions, why are we doing it to an old plot when you've got a newer school there, now I understand. This didn't come through as nine to twelve, we weren't aware of that in basic knowledge, this is new. So our, what I, the meeting I went to a while ago. Uh, we're in Carolina?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, okay, so, yeah. Sorry, you're, you're, you're coming small town, you know, it's, it happens. So, yeah, we, uh, there are a lot of people that are, were saddened when we lost the middle school, so they've always called it the middle school. But it was, it was with open arms, people were elished the idea when Johnny came in. But there has really been a disconnect over the last several years, it's just been, it's been like a silence.
Was Johnny you know?
Johnny was like the headmaster.
Okay.
If that's the right term, he was the head of the school, he was, he was the one that did the research and found the school and got things started. And then there's whoever the new guy is that came up here out of D C area. So, so it would be, I think it would be a good first step for some. Showing a face to, you know, the council, coming to us and kind of talking about, you know.
Yeah, well, I think Dr. Borman would love to do that, I think he wasn't available this evening, but I think we could make that, make that happen next, next go around. And I think in the meantime, maybe we could also get to understand where the, maybe the county is on in terms of the well drilling. Schools understanding given that approval was consented to the county, but it hasn't moved any further. So I think maybe we should figure out where the, where that disconnect.
This is, as you know, a big enough project that, you know, I think there needs to be regular interactions. So that kind of keep moving things forward, right? This doesn't happen every night under best of circumstances. And right now, we are not under the best of circumstances. I think if we move, would be, would be helpful.
I mean, I know we were kind of coming for, you know, approval, or at least we're asking for a review of phase one and phase two because it's the least.
Sure. Understand that. But without having some sense of the big items that are sitting at the helm and about the water and the waste treatment. We're, we're not at a point to be able to talk about moving forward to adding the capacity there for the campus. To then ultimately be able to take on additional students without those discussions starting.
Yeah.
Obviously, there's not going to be a resolution quick, but there needs to be some, some clarity and some, some kind of a plan on how, how this, because it's, it's going to be a large financial burden. And, uh, and it has a little different twist to it because you are, it's a private school, it's not a public school. So I, that means there's not necessarily saying county resources, I had safe resources. I don't know how that works with the, with the might being seen, but the, the solution for the water and waste treatment is not going to be cheap, no matter who happens there. Something I think that needs to be discussed sooner, not kick it on the road. We have buildings out there and how, we gotta do something with it and we can't do it. It, it will, you know, once we start talking about the dorm, I mean, that will stop. You're not going to be able to bring the students in without getting state approval, whichever agency.
Yeah, and I think that's the reason why I wanted to start with Blue Ridge, it's an existing building, it's kind of waiting to be renovated and utilized. Kind of similar to Windsor Hall, which was brought up, you know, brought up to code and give it a new life. I think the same ideas for Blue Ridge, trying to say.
I appreciate that you've come in to talk to us about this, because there was nobody coming in to come in to talk to us about. Stuff was going on. And I know the town had to go and say, what's going on? So don't want to have that happen again with this. So this is a good step, you're coming forward to get an idea and we see. Now, in fact, this, this, this has another power.
Michelle, with this type of project, is something where like developers write some responsibility agreement?
Probably the best way to do it. You will recall those who were at least attending the council, that we recently passed an ordinance that allows the town to enter into these longer term, multi-phase agreements. I, I think everybody involved understands, I understand why you want one and two. But if you get one and two and then you come back for three and then we run out of money and there's no wastewater and then everybody's going to be saying, why did you let us build one, two, and three? This, if you're going to do a project of this magnitude, I think everybody needs to understand how much it's going to cost. Who's going to pay for it? And that can't be just at a sit-down like this, that's got to be an, an extensive agreement that's executed by the legislative body. Uh, we don't, this board doesn't have the authority to do that. And I think that this is a beautiful plan, it's a lovely plan, there are pretty pictures, they're very nice. But how does it go from these pieces of paper to that plot of ground is a much more complicated thing. And I think that's echoing, I know what Mark said, we. I feel like there's a little bit of the cart before the horse here on approval of any phase for much of anything. Because even these are minor, but I, I, I know what Windsor cost to do and I know what the hookup fees were for Windsor. And that was the subject of some disputatiousness that we would like to avoid going forward, as is the well drilling, that. There's a little history on there that I think you guys have.
Oh, they're, they're, very well. Okay, so basically what we were trying to do was with. Okay, so basically what we were trying to do was with phase one, phase two, was they were, uh, like additions, essentially you pointed out. They're currently on utility. Maybe they ended making to classrooms for the already, they're not adding to the population, not attracting the population. Uh, but only adding additional usage to, um, to, to. So, there would be, they're already connected.
But phase two is adding a residence hall, so it's definitely adding.
Yeah, well, so we can back the residence hall out, and so what else is going with, was just the additions to, uh, Blue Ridge and Ziggler Hall. The residence hall would be nice to have in phase two, uh, I think if we can probably back it out and just have the additions within, uh, Ziggler Hall as well as Blue Ridge.
We, we couldn't approve a residence hall, we don't have water capacity to meet those people, so there is no way. And, and the fact that you're adding capacity, in a sense, to the di, I, I can understand the Blue Ridge side being classrooms. There'll be bathrooms, but not such a big deal, but Ziggler, you're adding administrative and dining, it sounds like, which means increased capacity, I would think.
It's primarily, um, the kitchen, kind of stays the same, we're just adding more seating capacity to their cafeteria, so that, that's the, the primary impetus behind the addition to Ziggler. I think there might be some administrative offices that would also, I think that's gonna be there, and in the launch overall.
Sure. But, but as you saw, we're in the red, the county's not gonna let us, even if we said yes, the county can't, cause there's no water from the state. And it would kind of be, for us to say yes would not.
What about, just if we were to look at Blue Ridge, since it's just a classroom building? Doesn't impact the existing number of students or anything, that it's taking the old building, just giving it new life so that it can be used. Would that be something that y'all would entertain in the viewing?
If you, like on, I understand why you're phasing it, so you're not going in there disturbing everything all at one time. So if you went in and did just Blue Ridge under phase one, basically really all you need to do is go to the county, get a grit, or a building permit.
Correct, but I think, my, my understanding is, well, Johnny should probably.
So our understanding is, any additional structure, whether it's addition or a new structure, needs, still needs to come through the planning commission to get approval first. So that's why we are bringing that up as well, as getting jumps and getting them all rolling, as well as taking an opportunity to continue discussions with your overall master plan. But try to get some more facilities, more, uh, classrooms, and a little bit of dining space for the student center already there. And as Sandy said, it's just utilizing spare footage for the most part, that's already there, adding in a little bit to, uh, each facility ultimately.
Ziggler is right now being used for cafeteria for both.
Correct, well, right now it's just one school, right now it's just one school, I think we're showing a vision to be able to have like a high school and a middle school, but right now it's just all one school, all the stuff is early. So, yeah, sort of, the thought process on, on Blue Ridge. It's a shame that it's just sitting there not being able to, you know, provide, um, space and give it new life.
And the phasing's not, etched in stone, it's able to move and flex with the town as well as capacity demand. Where wells become drilled on either the site or up toward the town, uh, more capacity comes online. Except if, if there was interest in building another facility versus a residence hall, those could be discussions had as well.
What, what's your timeframe on the phase one for the Blue Ridge expansion?
I think we'd be talking twenty twenty-seven for construction, we'd probably be looking at, uh, late twenty twenty-six, early twenty twenty-seven, start permitting plans. Uh, typically based about twelve months, well, fifteen months to go through the permitting process.
We're probably, in start design, it's a little easier.
So again, they already have hookups, uh, they already have connections, um, and the increased demand to those facilities would be relatively low.
So if there's a starting point, would be a site plan review, would be?
That's right.
For, for Blue Ridge, is that what you're talking about?
For Blue Ridge, yeah, and you have, uh, conceptual plans available to the next couple sheets behind that one.
You're expanding the footprint of the building, right?
Correct.
Just, like Windsor, I don't think they did any of that, I think they just, that was all interior.
That was interior.
Correct, yeah, Windsor was all interior.
Yeah, yeah, you know what I mean. I have, Gary made me a mini set. So it's, it's enough for this purpose.
And they'd have to get a grading permit too, but what, what difference does it make to let them?
That phase one is a big deal, I'm not happy, I just don't want them building.
Sounds like they show everything else worth that.
Yeah, phase one, I have no problem.
Yeah, they're talking about a twenty twenty-seven, and they're coming through, at least it lets them get smarter.
And this is conceptual design, uh, we're saying about fourteen thousand additions. And a lot of it, you know, because it, it sits in the hill, it's kind of in, in a bowl.
Yeah.
So we're, we're trying to match up the addition with the existing, um, floor levels of coverage. Uh, and then ultimately, it, the top level would, would be facing that new green, you know, the green quad. So I can, can zoom back to the, uh. So this is, um, the existing Blue Ridge footprint.
I like the lawn on the roof, is that really what you're gonna?
Well, it's just, you know.
Lead roofs.
So a green roof is a, uh, MBE by stormwater, uh, way to meet ESD threat credits.
Seen a lot of Hughes properties that do it out in Virginia, so.
There is a possibility roofs in that, that actually would have to factor in, you know.
It looks nice, it looks nice, yeah, it looks nice.
And urbanous areas.
Yeah.
Instead of growth, you know, have to do like biology experiments and have green roofs.
Since you raised that question, that this is not really what you're looking for tonight, but, uh, with this master plan, you're going from a poetic green space, especially in the form of, or, so, to now a lot of the British services. And I did not see any, I don't know if it was water, or something like that. Is it, but obviously, you're shaking your head, so you know where I'm going, but that's being addressed, how is that, how does that get addressed? Because that's a big deal.
It's a great question.
To run.
Thanks, Andy. Um, so yes, MBE is very strict on that, we live, we live in Maryland, the state of Maryland is very strict on it, we're one of the nation leading in, uh, stormwater management. With that being said, I think on the renderings, you don't really see it, on the engineered plans, um, there would be more detail, these, like I said, these were conceptual stages. There are planer boxes, uh, which are microbioretention facilities that hold up to, uh, ten thousand square feet of a purgatory area to treat that. Typically, for areas, infill areas similar to this, uh, we could go with a regional pond, which is what, uh, Chris Onis mentioned from the county at the last meeting. And it's, that could be another opportunity, but a lot of areas are, are going away from regional ponds, regional facilities, it seems like, to be more isolated, uh, facilities. So here you have the site kind of around, that's a traditionally graded, um, microbioretention, so dry pond, if you will. Uh, so it wouldn't, it would retain during a storm, but it would, uh, drain out.
That's.
Kind of like what's behind the middle school right now.
Correct.
But that's uphill, I was thinking we're in the triangle down here.
So you use, yeah, you see that around, there should be planer boxes, uh, kind of engineered and designed within the architecture.
Gray boxes shown around the, the lower.
Down in the, down in the bottom corner is one, as well, as well as the gray boxes around. This is something that we also, depending, depending on what the geotype report comes back as, choose different, uh, facilities, different facility types. Whether it's microbioretention, which has soil, depending on the ground, or if it has, uh, easy, pretty.
Let's go see, I was looking for the parking lot, I didn't see that.
So, we can meet the criteria, it's like, criteria.
I hear it, yeah.
White boxes, there could be underground storm, uh, vulnerable.
I feel sorry for my guy. That house. He's not gonna be happy. That house, we.
There has been some, uh.
There's still a lot of work to be done, absolutely.
Absolutely.
As well as a new development in the state. Uh, I believe with the town, that's, you know, they have a regional pond, so probably, uh, so. But at any closing, uh, we, uh, I think that's what we were trying to finalize was looking at the, uh, site approval for at least phase one, uh, for Blue Ridge and Ziggler Hall. In review or approval to move forward with those, that design for those existing buildings. That's kind of what we were trying to leave the meeting with, as well as provide some more additional context of the overall master plan.
Is there a phase one A, possibly a phase one B? Whereas it's renovation of Blue Ridge and new construction of Blue Ridge?
Kind of separate?
Yeah.
It could be, we haven't, we haven't talked about that, that sort of thing.
Where I am reluctant to want to say even just approval, or phase one from this group. Again, that's the idea, we're expanding the capacity of this with the idea that we're gonna be moving down the route, or to, that any of us have heard of that before. Knowing we gotta deal with the water and the waste treatment, and there hasn't been movement, or we're doing something on that. And to me, to have another month or two to start seeing some movement on that, I think would make, would, would be easier for me to be able to say, yeah, let's, let's go with phase one and one A. Or two, or something like that.
That doesn't make sense.
I mean, but now that, I, I feel like, I don't know if you know Rob Boes, Rob Boes has built, it's a big part of the interstate highway system. And he would buy, he would get pieces of land and build two miles of highway, then six miles down another three, then all of a sudden, he spent all this money, and, you know, we don't have a highway yet. And, and to me, that's what we're talking about, when we start adding capacity, and not have the big, big output.
Correct, and, and that's really why we wanted to make sure we showed the larger context and what the, the, the long-term idea is, but it, knowing that it might be, might be fifteen years, you know, more.
Sure.
So.
This is why it takes fifteen.
It does take.
But no, point taken, and I think we'll, we'll circle back, um, with school and understanding.
Kind of intention on them. Mark, could we make a motion contingent on a signed agreement for water rights at the school we would grant? No? You don't have to do that if you're just on phase one.
For phase one.
And the water at the school issue is more complex, because the, the original thought was not water at the school for the school. The thought was, we need more water sources, and look, there's water at the school, so the school was, apologies, completely irrelevant to the issue of the, the drilling of the water.
I understand that, but can't we tie approval to phase one with them officially giving us the water rights at the school that they supposedly think they've already given us?
Well, I don't know that they think they've already given us, and the whole discussion of water rights was one of the issues when we went round and round on this a year ago.
But if we make that a contingent.
In, in.
Well, first of all, they're just exploratory.
Oh, so we don't really, and we don't have the right to do it, I guess.
We're not grabbing any water rights.
Oh, okay.
We're exploring.
Okay, okay.
That's right.
Yeah, there, I think the two, you can do contingent approvals, but I think that you need to have a better nexus between the, the two things that are contingencies.
Trying to find you guys something that you could take home.
Take away with it, no, no, that's.
That's all I was trying to do. So when you, you have this designed on the upper campus for six phases, so when you're doing phase one, and then you would come back and do phase two. You're going to come before the commission, each phase with a separate plan for each phase, cause we're not, we're not obviously gonna grant you approval on everything at one time, so. You would, if we told you it was okay to do, start phase one plans, then you would come, come back to us with a final plan, with like a set of control, a landscaping plan, set, uh, stormwater, whatever's required by the county, correct?
So, uh, while you could approve the master plan, we're all running with that, but, uh, I think what we're here to refer to is phase one, break out the, the phase chunks. That is absolutely what, uh, can be done. The issue with that is the stormwater, uh, credits, because we would want to permit the entire, uh, we would want it. Yes, the entire master plan.
Do you have to get it, do you have to get an NPDS permit for this?
Uh, busy permit?
Uh, NPDS, environmental permit?
Yes.
For storm?
So there would be an ally, uh, in that part of the, actually.
So if you did that, you would do the whole project as one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, so.
Just for the, just for the environmental permit, right.
So we didn't have the ESD numbers attached with the stormwater. Uh, for all construction phases, we would come back in every phase and present that. I think that's probably the best way to do it, especially given, uh, water issue, and the waste water issues that way. At each step, the town can be, uh, covered, and say, well, you guys went over, or see where the, uh, where the supply man has come from. With that though, I do think the exploratory work, there was high expectations that water would be found down there.
Okay.
We're just, we're not high expectations that we could figure out how to do it.
We could get the water, okay, well, at least we have a, we have a good starting point.
We have nowhere to start.
Yeah, yeah, which is great.
Our, our understanding was that the county still owns that property, so, right, so I think it's just, the, the permission was just to allow them, since they're leasing it, to go ahead and, you know, without interruption, to program, to do the exploratory.
Yeah, the devil was very much in the details.
Okay. Good to know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. I know what Chris wanted, but it actually is a step. I know there are people watching, so that, that, this is, that, uh, the harder part. I wait back there, I love, I love you, you know, even, they don't always look nice.
There's gotta be a, an intention behind the design and the plan. In the end, there's good meeting and, um, sense of identity with the school and with the town.
Citizens be involved in hearing about.
That is a really good question, because when, I remember you said all the paper, when it got, I was still out there on the hallway, about the street case, that street case, the, uh, the workout here on the road. And I do believe there was, Johnny actually did have a, a meeting with the town. There was a session where people would come in and talk about, you know, the vision of, of, of the school up on the hill, and we haven't had.
We don't have a protocol fixed for that sort of community review, largely because we have never since they built the town had a project of this magnitude all coming in for one time.
Sure.
So that's not to say we couldn't, you know, everybody can get together and Lehigh has done it dozens of times with meetings, this is what we're doing, this is where we are, set up, people come. So there's all kinds of ways to do public engagement, which, cause if. Cause if the client comes through, this is, I mean, it's a great project, but it's great both in the physical and the metaphysical approaches. So people are going to want to know what's going on up there.
Communication support.
And communication has not been the strong suit.
At one point, they did breakfasts and they advertised their, their sporting events and tried to bring, but that really hasn't happened for a couple of years. Cause I know we did a few breakfasts at the, at the school just to see, and we went to, I think a basketball game. Their basketball team's pretty good. So.
There used to be, you know, announcements. Again, this is when Johnny was here and Johnny would come and let us know what was going on. We, we don't have any of that, but obviously the number of students is higher than. I did know they had a good basketball team. That's good.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We have some messages.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, what's your last name?
We covered a lot of the comprehensive land. So, um.
So what year did you graduate high school?
National night out's coming up Tuesday, the fifth of August.
Yep.
Annual gravity. I don't know if their tickets still available, Drew?
It's a waiting list for tickets.
Okay, on nine fourteen?
Yes.
Music on the main Saturday, nine four. Our next meeting is uh, the 25th of August at six. And then there's one in September, nine twenty-two.
I'd like to add, I don't know whether everybody even knows this, we have a new coffee business in town.
Yes.
Uh, off of Springdale Savanna's. I highly recommend you going there. Their coffee is amazing. Their pastries are wonderful. And Savannah is a very nice person. We want to help her succeed. It was the yellow turtle.
Sunday at Savannah's.
Sunday at Savanna's. There is a comedy night tomorrow night at Savanna's. Be there.
How do you get there? You go out of Springdale.
Yeah, take a right. It's on, off of Springdale. Before you get to the.
Yeah, it's the lower part of the campus that we're looking at.
It's right before you get to the, um, the development.
Thank you, Kyle. Sandy, thank you.
When you come from seventy-five and you hit Main Street, you make a left, you're hit towards some of those streets at all, that's Springdale. You go back, Springdale. Yeah, that's what that may be about.
Not even that far. It's before you get to Row. It's before you get to the development of the.
I know where you mean that, yeah.
Yeah, it's a big yellow.
Mag, Seasons at Magnolia for a couple of years. They did weddings and stuff like that.
A Christmas thing.
Yes, we did a Christmas way back friend, one year. New Windsor did.
Correct.
Okay, um, any, uh, that's a good announcement about this. Any uh, anything else anybody has?
We're not doing the comprehensive.
I've got 45 seconds.
We roll out of here by eight o'clock.
Okay, gotta get a motion to.
Don't move. Seconded.
All right. I did grace the second of my Kevin Aldo's favorite picture of five by eye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven.